The end of the day, though, we don't have a strong.
Thank you.
What they're trying to encourage.
Courts favor.
Which is putting it off.
Thirty-eight acres.
We used to think.
Deposures were.
Three, seven, eight lines.
That's what it says.
Looking towards some free.
Sounds good.
Yep.
How are you doing?
Hi Kathy.
I would have called you today about something, but it's a crazy day.
One of those days, huh?
Oh, Jesus, oh. My gosh, thank you.
Things are going in New Hampshire?
I know, I'm wondering.
Hi Mary.
I hope that it goes ahead and in the caucus.
Jake, you doing all right tonight? Good to see you. Doing good?
That was a little messy. It's like a gun. Every gun's loaded and every.
My son might be out. My son, I know they've never been. They haven't been together at all. My husband, nobody's been out with anyone today.
Secretary of State there. Point of saying there are no apps. It's just paper.
Oh, gosh. Yeah, we need to call the cops.
You know, we let them.
Jake from State Farm.
But who else was with them?
They're not getting any breaks with the sickness.
Gone off, you know. A different.
Officers usually, you know, they're pretty responsible. They know what time they're supposed to be home.
It's so hard, you want to get in the free day. Well, back in the day, yeah, everybody rode around there all the time.
Yeah, and we still do.
But y'all are near Center Street and that's all the way down the other end of Pitt.
A little bit of a hike. I never, I, I never. So it's like they go, they go down there, but they always go in groups of like three or four. Uh huh, and then they all back together.
I might go to the doctor tomorrow. I might even. I went home, I did this thing in, uh, here today, which is really good. It teaches kids, you know, are you familiar?
My son told me you were gonna be one of the judges.
Your son?
Yes.
Yeah. So you sit there with each kid for one minute.
Here, you can have mine. I got my own if you need more.
Did this come through some committee? I know what this is. This is, as it came through our committee, expectation that I didn't.
No kidding.
Yes, somebody's gonna speak on that and they'll explain when they get up here. So adding a sense of order. So not just.
Doesn't happen too many more. Oh my gosh.
Then this one is.
That was already there.
Overall, were you impressed with?
Oh, yes.
Quality of the game.
System was just right in this situation.
And this is correct. We should extend eight inches of doorway to keep the rain out. Because I guess it was.
Y'all ready? Counselor ready?
Good evening, everyone. Let me call to order the Tuesday, February eleventh meeting of Mount Pleasant Town Council. We're a little past six P M. It's good to see everybody here. Our agenda has been publicized and is before you. Item number one is a prayer by Reverend Judith Ewing, followed by the pledge that will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Tom O'Rourke. Judith.
Please bow your heads. Almighty God, send down upon those who hold office in this town of Mount Pleasant the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the best, the well-being of all people. Fill each person here today with a determination to do what is right, this special place we all call home, especially be with our mayor, Will Hayne, in his leadership. Finally, teach your people, dear God, to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to each other, their fellow citizens and neighbors, and support our trusty leaders to make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, so that we may, we may serve faithfully in our generation and honor your holy name. And so, dear Lord, fill us all with your peace and grace tonight and always. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands for the nation under God and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, Judith. We love your southern accent. Southern Britain, I'm sure, right? It's great. Thank you so much. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
To move. Second.
In a second. Any discussion? All right. If you will tell us.
Yes, counsel, thank you.
This is a point of order.
Yeah, there, there's been a request from the planning department to move item seven A, which is a consent agenda item, to eight B three, which is planning old business. And the reason is there may be some discussions of an amendment, and it would not be appropriate for a consent agenda item.
Could, could you give us that number again?
Yes, sir. Item seven A, final reading, final reading of ordinance number two zero 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 three should be moved to planning old business, item eight B three.
And just for discussion's sake, this has to do with a, some wording technicality, but technically it is an amendment, so it could not be on the consent agenda.
May I also would like to move item seven E on the ordinance regarding humane treatment of animals to the, to the main agenda. This, there has been some discussion with the Charleston Animal Society and the Humane Society working together with, and they have some amendments to the, the ordinance.
And that would be item eight B four.
Would that be under planning or would it come under counsel, the whole business?
Nope, I think you're right, sir. That would be.
That would be ten B, ten B.
Ten B one.
One.
Ten B one.
Ten B one. Okay, so we have, we can do these together.
Yes, sir.
We have two amendments to the agenda.
Second.
And we have a second, so we'll first vote on the amendments. Is there any discussion? We have a motion, a second. All in favor of the amendments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the amendment's passed. Now let's vote to approve the total agenda. All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have an approved agenda. Item number four, public hearings, awards, and presentations, and we will come around and, or do we need to come around?
We can stay here, sir.
We can stay here, all right. We have an announcement that Nancy Shipman and I will, will do, and this is about the Our Community, Our Children event coming up in March, so I'll join you out front.
Everybody knows Nancy Shipman? Yeah, she runs Wake Up Carolina, Mount Pleasant native, and mom extraordinaire, and is very active in the, addressing the opioid crisis in our nation, in our state. And she helped us last year with our first annual Our Community, Our Children event, where we're under the great guidance of our police department, who is a statewide leader in addressing these crises that we as families and that our children are facing, that we come together as a community and talk about it and talk about resources, and more importantly, we get to know each other, and families come together who are addressing these issues together. So I'll turn it over to you.
I'm Nancy Shipman, the executive director of Wake Up Carolina, and we are so excited to be having this second annual Our Community, Our Children. What started out as a concern in the community from young adults and parents talking about these scary concerns, human trafficking, child sexual abuse, substance use with opioids, as well as seeing the help. And if we continue what I found, if we continue to do this in our midst and we don't talk about it, it breeds. And so we came to Chief Ricky and Mayor Hayne and said, I really think we need to do something, and they jumped right on the three foot. They said, let's throw something great. So we sat there with all these panelists, and what we didn't realize is that it was gonna be a sold-out, crowded event, which is crazy for the first time, as well as conversations and drizzled with resources that transpired. So what we're doing differently this year is we join together, we have made smaller panels, a morning session that begins at nine thirty, ends at eleven, a break for lunch, start again at one o'clock and finishes up about two thirty or three. Morning will be on human trafficking and child sexual abuse, with the resources that our art panel is right here in the community. It's important to me, us, where we are with these resources. Afternoon is substance use and mental health. So with this, what we've done to celebrate a very exciting day, and this came at request of People at Lasters event, carry this conversation out into the room outside of our event, at Waterfront Park, in Waterfront Park. We're gonna have bluegrass and barbecue with time to get to know the vendors, that are gonna have twenty tables as well as all the panelists out there. So then any questions you have, you can talk about it with them, and also celebrate a day where you feel empowered, you're more aware and educated, so that it can't continue to be like, you're not part of the community.
Thank you. This is Saturday, March seventh, starting what time?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, and it's in the Copper River Room, and then the community event is on the grass afterwards. You can come to any part of it, or just come to the fellowship, because if you or somebody you know is struggling with these issues, these are not easy things to talk about, but you will meet people there in a non-threatening environment that you can speak with and ask how they got through this, or where they need to go to get the help to do it. And Chief, do you have anything you'd like to add? We just want to thank you and the officers for all of your help.
No, I appreciate it. Y'all said most of it. It is a community effort, and we like to work together to talk about the services for all the different things that cause abuse there, and also, you know, so we're proud to be part of this.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Nancy. I appreciate it.
Item number five on our agenda, approval of the minutes from the January fourteenth, twenty twenty Town Council meeting and the January twenty twenty financial statement. Do we have a motion?
To move.
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Item number six is public comment. You have signed up. When your name is called, please come to the lectern. You have two minutes. We need your name and address, and there is a clock to help you. We ask, limit your comments to two minutes, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have several speakers this evening, so I will call two up, and the first person will speak, and there'll always be a person on deck that I will call. So the first two speakers are George Freeman and Chris Coleman. Mr. Freeman, if you would speak first, please.
Good evening. George Freeman, fourteen fifty Bowman Road, Director of Community Activity for CAGE. My family, along with many other families in Six Mile, have lived in Six Mile for more than one hundred and twenty years. As neighborhood president in the mid nineties, I worked with the Six Mile residents to annex sixty-three acres into the town under the seventy-five percent majority petition. We annex into, maybe annex with the understanding that we would be able to maintain our lifestyle and that the town would treat us with the same as other communities in the town. In two thousand and six, Six Mile community in the unincorporated section, along with the incorporated section, in conjunction with the county and Mount Pleasant government, agreed that the minimum lot size in Six Mile would be twelve thousand five hundred square feet. The creation of the sweetgrass basket overlay was to ensure that both the town and the county adhered to the lot size. However, the county has continued to respect the decision while Town Council has ignored the decision of the majority. Last month, the majority of planning commissioners and planning committee members voted to deny their latest request to lessen lot size in the Six Mile community. We do not understand why county, well, sorry, we do not understand why Town Council continues to vote with a minority population that have moved into the community when the majority had voted otherwise. Today, when you vote, the majority will determine the outcome. What it is, what is it about the Six Mile community that makes you treat us differently? Thank you.
Deborah Sanchez? Go ahead, sir.
Hi. My name is Chris Coleman, one eighteen Pitt Street. What if I told you that the town was about to consider giving away about three hundred to six hundred thousand dollars in property interest for nothing? What if you were being told that you should do this because the individual has property rights, but has no such rights and is actually trying to take yours? What if you knew this action would adversely affect the public open space and historical resources in this town? Well, welcome to the wonderful world of the encroachment permit at one oh one Mary Street. They are applying for a permit, an encroachment permit, that will allow them to exclusively and permanently occupy a small amount of land, but the real objective is to grab control of the dock corridor out, outshore. Those offshore lands add about three hundred to six thousand dollars to the value of one oh one Mary Street. Under town, under state law, only the Town Council can grant an interest in lands. It cannot be done by an encroachment permit. It should come to you. You should decide whether this is a good idea or not. Also at law, it is the upland owner that has the right to decide what happens offshore of their property. That owner is you, the town of Mount Pleasant. It's the foot of Hibben Street. You own that. There's a nineteen thirty deed that confirms that you own that. One oh one Mary does not own that. They cannot build anything, and I mean anything, on, in that corridor unless you give up your rights to them. It's, it's the reverse of what you're being told. The affected area is the foot of Hibben Street. It will impair the view. You all have a couple of pictures before and after that show you approximately what I think will happen when this dock ends up there. It will adversely affect historical values. It was the site of the Charleston and Seashore Railroad ferry terminal and the end of its docks. Finally, it will preclude this town from using the offshore lands in the future, or simply deciding that you want to leave it alone. Thank you for your attention.
Joseph Sanchez?
Hello, everybody. My name is Deborah Sanchez from Mount Pleasant, and I'm here, I believe, for the final reading tonight.
Of what matter, ma'am?
Twenty-one sixty-one Annie Laurel Lane, Mount Pleasant.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
Debbie McLawhorn?
Joseph Sanchez, twenty-one sixty-one Annie Laurel Lane, requesting continuation of the thoughts for annexation into the city of Mount Pleasant, and also the rezoning of our property to R three. I'm fifty-eight years old. I've been a member of the Mount Pleasant community for my, almost my entire adult life, excluding twelve years when my work took me away. My work brought me back here to be part of this community again. All I ask is what is naturally I thought to be mine, to help me and my family expand ourselves, to better ourselves. You know, fifty-eight years of my life is just a small portion of this, you know. We've watched the community grow to an extent that I never thought this would happen when I saw the five twenty-six bridge come across. Properties have, just people have moved in, yes, but just one property subdividing north of Six Mile Road, the entire communities were built there. Not mi, just one, many, and I don't understand how anybody could object a single family from bettering themselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Edward Cocha DeFaro?
Hi, I'm Debbie McLawhorn, and my address is twenty-three thirty-four North Creek Drive, also the founder of Southern Paws Animal Rescue, which is located right here in Mount Pleasant. I'm speaking on behalf of the second reading on the tethering laws for animals. First want to say that I don't believe in tethering regardless of the situation. I've seen too many damaged animals done by leaving them on a chain twenty-four seven, but that's not about me tonight. It's about establishing guidelines that will assist in the future with law enforcement and helping protect animals and having a humane, a humane ordinance in place. I believe this will reduce noise calls for service with the police department by not allowing them to be left on chains from ten P M. to six A M. I believe that if we enforce these, the animals will be provided with shelter, food, and fresh water, and they will actually stand a chance to have a better quality of life. I believe the extreme weather conditions where the owners are required by law, their animals to be in are besighted, is very important to the welfare of the, of the animals, and it's, I don't even understand why we had to put that in ordinance, but those who remember Xena, who was left on the chains during the last hurricane on Highway forty-one, she was chained as well as no shelter, sitting in about four inches of water. She's safe now. She belongs to Southern Paws Animal Rescue, but will never be adopted due to the amount of medical issues that she had from extreme living and the weather conditions. And the sad thing about Xena is for the last four years, anybody that lived on Highway forty-one or anywhere near that saw her day in and day out, but there was nothing in ordinance for county as well as Mount Pleasant to help assist her, and that was right near Rivertown and Park West. This isn't about being rich or poor, not being able to take care of the animals, because there's so many organizations out here willing to help people that don't have the funding. This would be a great start on being able to voice on these animals. No other agency needs to tell Mount Pleasant how to do this.
Debbie.
Just one more. I believe the chief and the, and the officers here can do this, so I ask you to please consider it for the safety of these animals.
Thank you. Jackie Cocha DeFaro?
Hello, I'm Edward Coche DeFaro, nine fifty Key Colony Court. I'm one of the homeowners at Sullivan's Point. I sent you guys this letter. I'm not gonna read it verbatim, but basically, you know, we found out our community back in November when someone was performing due diligence, potentially buying one of the properties, realized that we was zoned commercial. We were part of that overlay that got removed. Our entire property became commercial at that point, so we put in applications to reinstate residential plus all the permitted under the overlays and so forth. And the, you know, I've attended all the meetings. I kind of spearheaded this whole program for our community, attended the planning commission, and they adopted everything. I mean, we, we really appreciate, they were very understanding of our, our situation, but unfortunately, the planning committee was a different story. In fact, we had one member that even voted against us going just to residential. And at that point, we realized, you know, we had some issues. I didn't want to get attorneys involved. Some of the homeowners at the very beginning said we need to get legal representation, and I thought we could just, you know, this was a mistake by the county commission, this thing would all go through, but unfortunately, it didn't, didn't happen, so we did have to get legal representation on this. So I'm asking for a compromise with you guys. We're talking about just reinstating the overlay underneath our property, that's all, not anywhere else. Reinstate the overlays that we can rebuild our properties in case there's a fire, hurricane, anything like that. Now, I know there's discussions about an ordinance eventually allowing homeowners to rebuild as built, permit as built. When that ordinance passed, you take the overlay back off. That way you satisfy your, your, your goals of not having this overlay, and, I mean, it's a simple act for you guys. You just, it's not that hard to do this, and plus, I mean, we have quite a lot of homeowners here that are really stressed out about this, because they're looking at their, their, their investment. I mean, this is their house, and they're realizing they cannot rebuild.
Sure.
Well, I had more, but thank you anyway.
Thank you, sir. Daniel Prevo?
So I'm reading for a man, his name is Christopher Tichario. He couldn't be here.
It was the site of the Charleston and Seashore Railroad ferry terminal and the end of its docks. Finally, it will preclude this town from using the offshore lands in the future, or simply deciding that you want to leave it alone. Thank you for your attention.
Joseph Sanchez?
Hello, everybody. My name is Deborah Sanchez from Mount Pleasant, and I'm here, I believe, for the final reading tonight.
Of what matter, ma'am?
Twenty-one sixty-one Annie Laurel Lane, Mount Pleasant.
Yes.
Okay.
Joseph Sanchez, twenty-one sixty-one Annie Laurel Lane, requesting continuation of the thoughts for annexation into the city of Mount Pleasant, and also the rezoning of our property to R three. I'm fifty-eight years old. I've been a member of the Mount Pleasant community for my, almost my entire adult life, excluding twelve years when my work took me away. My work brought me back here to be part of this community again. All I ask is what is naturally I thought to be mine, to help me and my family expand ourselves, to better ourselves. You know, fifty-eight years of my life is just a small portion of this, you know. We've watched the community grow to an extent that I never thought this would happen when I saw the five twenty-six bridge come across. Properties have, just people have moved in, yes, but just one property subdividing north of Six Mile Road, entire communities were built there. Not mi, just one, many, and I don't understand how anybody could object a single family from bettering themselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Edward Cochutefaro?
Hi, I'm Debbie McLawhorn, and my address is twenty-three thirty-four North Creek Drive, also the founder of Southern Paws Animal Rescue, which is located right here in Mount Pleasant. I'm speaking on behalf of the second reading on the tethering laws for animals. First want to say that I don't believe in tethering regardless of the situation. I've seen too many damaged animals done by leaving them on a chain twenty-four seven. But that's not about me tonight. It's about establishing guidelines that will assist in the future with law enforcement and helping protect animals and having a humane, a humane ordinance in place. I believe this will reduce noise calls for service for the police department by not allowing them to be left on chains from ten PM to six AM. I believe that if we enforce these, the animals will be provided with shelter, food, and fresh water, and they will actually stand a chance to have a better quality of life. I believe the extreme weather conditions where the owners are required by law, their animals to be in are besighted, is very important to the welfare of the, of the animals, and it's, I don't even understand why we have to put that in ordinance, but those who remember Xena, who was left on the chains during the last hurricane on Highway forty-one, she was chained, as well as no shelter, sitting in about four inches of water. She's safe now. She belongs to Southern Paws Animal Rescue, but will never be adopted due to the amount of medical issues that she had from extreme living and the weather conditions. And the sad thing about Xena is for the last four years, anybody that lived on Highway forty-one or anywhere near that saw her day in and day out. But there was nothing in ordinance for county as well as Mount Pleasant to help assist her, and that was right near Rivertown and Park West. This isn't about being rich or poor, not being able to take care of the animals, because there's so many organizations out here willing to help people that don't have the funding. This would be a great start on being able to voice on these animals. No other agency needs to tell Mount Pleasant how to do this.
Debbie.
Just one more. I believe the chief and the, and the officers here can do this, so I ask you to please consider it for the safety of these animals.
Thank you.
Okay?
Jackie Cochutefaro?
Hello, I'm Edward Cochutefaro, nine fifty Key Colony Court. I'm one of the homeowners at Sullivan's Point. I sent you guys this letter. I'm not going to read it verbatim, but basically, you know, we found out our community back in November when someone was performing due diligence, potentially buying one of the properties, realized that we was zoned commercial. We were part of that overlay that got removed. Our entire property became commercial at that point. So we put in applications to reinstate residential, plus all the permitted under the overlays and so forth. And the, you know, I've attended all the meetings. I kind of spearheaded this whole program for our community. I attended the planning commission, and they adopted everything. I mean, we, we really appreciate, they were very understanding our, our, our situation, but unfortunately, the planning committee was a different story. In fact, we had one member that even voted against us going just to residential. And at that point, we realized, you know, we had some issues. I didn't want to get attorneys involved. Some of the homeowners at the very beginning said we need to get legal representation, and I thought we could just, you know, this was a mistake by the county commission. This thing would all go through, but unfortunately, it didn't, didn't happen, so we did have to get legal representation on this. So I'm asking for a compromise with you guys. We're talking about just reinstating the overlay underneath our property, that's all, not anywhere else. Reinstate the overlays, that we can rebuild our properties in case there's a fire, hurricane, anything like that. Now, I know there's discussions about an ordinance eventually allowing homeowners to rebuild as built, permit as built. When that ordinance pass, you take the overlay back off. That way, you satisfy your, your, your goals of not having this overlay. And, I mean, it's a simple act for you guys. You just, it's not that hard to do this, and plus, I mean, we have quite a lot of homeowners here that are really stressed out about this, because they're looking at their, their, their investment. I mean, this is their house, and they're realizing they cannot rebuild.
Sure.
Well, I had more, but thank you anyway.
Thank you, sir. Daniel Prevo?
So I'm reading for a man, his name is Christopher Tichario. He couldn't be here. He's the owner of nine sixty-two Key Colony Court, and he owns one of the parcels in Sullivan's Point development, which is seeking rezoning tonight under proposed ordinance number two zero zero one one. I regret that I was unable to attend this meeting in person, but greatly appreciate you allowing this letter to be read. I would first like to thank all the members of the council for hearing our requests, and to especially thank the staff of the planning department for all of their support and assistance to date in researching and presenting the issue. Professionally, I am a registered architect with over a decade of practice in the residential sector, and I've studied over many zoning codes and presented to numerous governing bodies such as yourself. I only provide the qualification to make clear that I understand and deeply appreciate the critical importance of having appropriate zoning restrictions in that place that ensure that all town, that our town retains its unique character. I also understand and appreciate that what is considered to be appropriate for new development within the town can and should evolve over time. But I respectfully admit that the evolution should not happen at the chaotic rate which has transpired in regards to our properties over the past several years. The homes in our development are now existing structures in impeccably good condition, built as fully approved by all governing bodies just a few years ago. At this juncture, there is no fair or reasonable cause to deny our properties the same legal protection as any other existing and conforming property in the town. Any remaining debate regarding the specific zoning regulations that were in place when our homes were built should be waged in respect to future development, not at the peril of recent development. What precedent will be set for future development if legal zoning status can be revoked with such disregard for those who have made-
Ma'am.
...financial investment in the growth of the town?
Ma'am, could you please tell us your address for the record?
Mine is nine five zero Key Colony Court.
Thank you. Thank you. Vishel Patel?
Hello, my name is Daniel Prevo. I'm homeowner at nine sixty-eight Key Colony Court in Sullivan's Point with several other homeowners that are here tonight about the same zoning issue. Just wanted to thank you guys for your service. I know your intentions are good. However, I think I sent a letter on Monday that hopefully all of you have read, calling your attention to the issues that Ed spoke about earlier. This is the eighteenth home I've purchased in three states, and this is the first time I've ever had to come to a council meeting regarding a zoning issue that happened after the closing on one of my properties. So I'm, it's confusing to me how it happened to begin with, but my hope that the intentions are good regarding the recent changes to the overlay zoning, but these changes have very significant negative implications to the property values of all the homeowners in Sullivan's Point. So I just want to ask that you guys consider what Ed offered earlier. We did not want to get legal representation, but we've been forced to do so, and we're hoping that this was an oversight that can get cleared up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Olson?
Hello, good evening. Vishel Patel, calling thirteen thirty-one Smythe Street is the address. Here to speak in regards to two properties, three ten Johnny Dodds Boulevard and four hundred McGrath Darby. Along with myself, my brother, and my father, we own those properties. We own and operate those hotels. There are hotels located at both of those properties. Here to speak about the proposed height change in the gateway district for the first reading tonight. We felt that decision is, hasn't been handled in, in a proper way. We obviously don't agree with the proposed height changes from the eighty feet that it is currently to the fifty-five feet at one of our properties and sixty-five feet to the other. We purchased three ten Johnny Dodds in two thousand twelve with the ultimate goal of redeveloping that property to its highest and best use. Currently, it's a two-story exterior motel, and I think we could all agree that probably isn't the highest and best use for an entrance gateway to Mount Pleasant. We certainly want to redevelop that property to something that fits its surrounding neighbors. We have a six-story hotel next to us, next door to us, the Hilton Garden Inn, another six-story hotel, the Hotel Indigo, that bookends our other property. So, you know, the bookends of our properties are, are structures that are nearing eighty feet in height, and I think most of us could agree that they don't look out of place. People drive by them every day, and to lower our properties down to sixty-five and fifty-five without really any advance warning or any conversations with those property owners, I just don't think is right. With, in conjunction that the comprehensive plan is being updated currently, I, I think it would be wise and behoove the town in long run that to take a look at the height changes in conjunction with the changes to the comprehensive plan. I think it makes a whole lot more sense to do that, considering the implications as far as the loss of tax, tax revenue and so forth.
David Dinunzio?
Hi, I'm Amy Olson, fourteen fifty-five Cambridge Lakes Drive, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Joseph Gramley, nine seventy-eight Key Colony Court, Sullivan's Point, with the hope that you'll vote to restore Sullivan's Point to the classification that was in place when the home was purchased in two thousand seventeen. The changes in classification that have been made to the development renders the home almost impossible to sell, refinance, or insure. Joe and all the current owners entered into sales agreements and pay taxes on their property based on the understanding that the development was in compliance with building ordinances that were in place. It's in the best interest of the town, not just its owners, to ensure that the houses that currently exist are able to be rebuilt as they are today and were approved to be built if fire or hurricane should damage the home beyond fifty percent of value. No one is asking for more than what they legally purchased or what any other homeowner in Mount Pleasant would expect for their home. Please vote to return Sullivan's Point to its original classification. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Timberman?
Good evening. My name's David Dinunzio. I'm here as well in regards to Sullivan's Point with nine sixty-four Key Colony Court. I basically just wanted to be sure we're all on the same page and sort of just mention, you know, what has transpired. We all purchased our homes. Everyone purchased their home in this subdivision for, I think the lowest purchase price was north of half a million dollars. So basically, with the zoning change that's taken place after we've purchased the properties, it is going to make it so that if a hurricane or, or some, you know, if a fire comes along and burns the property more than fifty percent, we would then not be allowed to rebuild the property. I just wanted to make sure that everyone on the council is considering, you know, put yourself in our shoes. You, you bought a property, and then you go and get a CO that is valid, and all of a sudden, now the CO is not valid, and then, you know, you go to sell the house, and there's some type of due diligence situation where an attorney found the zoning, and nobody even knew about the zoning change until November. I guess it happened about six months prior to that. Just want everyone to consider being in our shoes and that just the financial hardship that would take place if a hurricane hit the neighborhood, or if there was a fire, and, you know, it would just be devastating for everybody involved. Thanks.
Alicia Williams?
Robert Timberman, twenty-one forty-two Golf Drive. I'm here to speak again on the Annie Laurel Project, and I'd like to first thank the council for the last vote that we had, and it was favorable for Mr. Sanchez and his son. I've lived in the community for thirty-seven years. My son was born in the community. We've watched this Six Mile community, and I've seen votes from the same people that come up and oppose it positively for Magnolia Village with a higher density, for premise at the point, and I don't understand, you oppose one and, you know, go for one vote and then oppose this one. Then lastly, this area, and the police chief can absolutely confer to this, has been in a past very high traffic for drugs and trash and everything else that we've had over the years. The chief and his staff helped us clean it up. We've got a new road in there. People are walking in the community again, and I invited council many times, please come down and see it. We've changed what the community was, because if Six Mile community is what has been represented, it's definitely not the one I've lived in for thirty-seven years. Now it's back, and I'm glad to see it, and I am in support of what's going on within the neighborhood. I'm in support of the newer homes and the old trailers being torn down, and yes, it is an improvement. Yes, does that come with some density? Yes, one home. That is not like, that is going to be anything compared to what else is voted in, just like Oyster Point, Liberty Hill, which was exempted, and many other communities. We're not asking for you to come in and put fifty homes in the area. We're just asking for the man to be able to let his son build a home in the same community that has suddenly changed, and please come down and visit it. It's nice again. We can walk it. Kids are going through bicycles. I mean, it's just people walking their dogs. It's beautiful. And the areas that you voted previously for Liberty Hill, the twelve lots are still there. It's not like this thing is growing at some phenomenal rate. Not one of those lots has been developed yet. One is finally going to start. This is not an expansion. This is a small growth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Angela Baldwin?
Hi, I'm Alicia Williams, and I'm the founder of Yanoya Rescue. My address is twenty sixty-five Marshflower Lane, but I currently reside at nine nine seven Segal Drive in Shemwood eleven. Don't know the proper number for it or anything like that, but I'm against tethering without guidelines like Debbie is here, and I, she touched on a lot of great points. I think the one thing that's, it's not, a lot of people don't know or understand is that politics really come into play here. I feel like most of the organizations who believe in no tethering guidelines are trying to just save their no-kill status. That means that if we didn't have tethering guidelines, it would take away possible adoptions and increase their intake, but I think if we want to be a no-kill, we need to do better. We need to strive for these animals to have a proper life. So if that means that the no-kill status is erased, I think humanely euthanizing is better than them being hit by a car, or starvation, or dehydration, or anything like that. So I just want our animals to have a good life worth living. They've already been through hell, so I don't see why that would be in favor of them. I would only be in favor of the organizations who want to keep their no-kill status, which is just a marketing tactic anyways. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Angela Baldwin? Are you here, ma'am? Emmy Burkus and Michael Jennings? Ms. Burkus, if you'll speak first.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to request that you seriously consider reducing the building heights from eighty to fifty-five feet. I live off Wingo Way. I have difficulty getting onto Wingo Way in both directions, as it is now. I know there are going to be large buildings that are going to be coming our way, but I think fifty-five feet is enough. I think the eight, the eighty-foot buildings are frankly eyesores. They don't belong in the Low Country. So please consider seriously reducing these building heights. I think enough's enough. Thank you.
Adam Schubert?
Hey, Michael Jennings. I own a property at nine seventy-five Key Colony Court. When I bought this property, I was understanding that it was going to be a good investment for me, as I'm getting very close to retiring, I hope. But now we've come upon this new situation where they're trying to make it where you can't rebuild if we have Hugo, or Gracie, or any kind of fire or anything we've had in, in Charleston before, and I really think it's only common sense that you would allow someone to put back what they had, and you already approved it. So I appreciate you all would look out for us, and, and I put it back like it was. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Martha Jane Walker?
Good evening. Adam Schubert from nine eighty Key Colony Court at Sullivan's Point. It's a home I purchased in two thousand eighteen. Mount Pleasant is a perfect place to raise a family, as I'm newly engaged with a wedding date set in August. My fiance will be moving here after dental school graduation in May. She recently signed a contract to Mount Pleasant with hopes of creating a life here as we begin our journey together. As an Air Force instructor pilot, I'm constantly on missions supporting the United States' interests globally. It is not uncommon to average two hundred to three hundred days away from home every year. We often fly complex missions, even carrying the Vice President of the United States and other high-level government officials. Any unnecessary distractions on the home front can create undue friction and a loss of mission focus while executing the nation's highest calling. I'd like to thank you for your willingness to serve on the town council. We purchased home with the best of intentions. What we thought was a safe and stable place to start a life has been turned into an uncertain nightmare. With it, with the change in zoning, our home has become a place that can be destroyed with no hopes to rebuild. Changing the zoning of our home has the potential to irreversibly damage the life we worked many years to achieve. We all live stressful life. This in particular is creating undue stress for Leslie and I. With the combination of being away as an Air Force pilot, learning how to be a married couple, and Leslie's brand-new career, we are adding another stressor to an already full plate. The serious zoning issue could potentially end our dreams and careers before they even begin. Finally, I would like to, like to ask each of you to put yourself in the situation described above. Imagine your home, the home you currently reside in, the one you have established a life in, the home you have worked your entire life for, being rendered basically worthless. What if I told you that your home could be destroyed with no hopes of ever getting it back the way it was? If you're able to take a step back and truly put yourself in our shoes, we think you'd realize the dire need for a positive and fair resolution to this matter. Let's get this resolved immediately. Thank you so much.
Ms. Walker? Tanner Forrester?
Hi, good evening. I'm Martha Jane Walker, owner at nine five, fifty-eight Key Colony Court, as you all are aware of while we are here this evening. First, thank you so much for your time and service to our community. As you are aware, we, I purchased my Sullivan's Point home and went to closing with C, with, went to closing with COs from Mount Pleasant that were conforming, and we are here today because, in fact, they are not. I, like most of you, want to preserve our natural landscape of our community and all future developments. This is not a future development. This is my home. I'm a single mother to a sixteen-month-old. I am responsible for elderly parents with physical needs that my home does not meet their needs. My home has been on the market for a hundred and fifty days. I'm unable to sell my home at this time, and I need to support my family and my child, and because of this situation, I'm unable to do so. The oversight of these zoning issues has caused much burden, as you can imagine. We are real people who wish to only see our leaders in this community make the right decisions for those of us, like Sullivan's Point homeowners, who have invested to be in this community and in the town in which you serve. Thank you for your attention and correction to this oversight in zoning of mine and my daughter's home. Appreciate it.
Luann Lathrop?
Good evening. Tanner Forrester, nine fifty-six Key Colony Court. Just to echo what my neighbors are saying, I'm also a father and have two young children who, when I purchased this home, looked at it as an investment that down the road, I could help pay for their college that way, which, obviously, you know where things are at right now. I'm just going to hit some of the high points that maybe my neighbors haven't all hit on. But the town's modification to the overlay zoning, under which these structures our homes were permitted and built, had various unintended consequences, including rendering single-family residences no longer permitted use. These zoning changes that are outlined in here will fix that. Without these zoning changes, a black cloud will continue to hang over our properties, rendering them basically unable to be resold. The town's professional planning and zoning staff recommended these changes based on the town's comprehensive plan and otherwise. These zoning changes do not grant us any additional rights or development capacity. Rather, they simply acknowledge that the as-built condition of our homes enable them to be rebuilt in the case of any natural disaster or other. I would just encourage you to please put yourselves in our position. Think about your family, your family's livelihood. That's where we're at right now. I would strongly encourage you to reinstate these ordinances as we've requested. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Ellis Campaign?
Luann Lathrop, nine fifty-six Key Colony Court. I guess I'm just echoing pretty much what everyone else is saying here tonight. I appreciate your time and efforts as council members. I guess I want to also echo that I, like one of the other gentlemen, have owned properties both personally on a residential and a commercial basis in probably four different states and twelve to fourteen different properties, and I've never encountered anything like this, where something that we go into with good faith on buying a property that everyone has come together and certified, and we buy it, and everything's supposed to be good, and then all of a sudden, we turn around and find out that there's been a decision that has been made that has changed all of that and affected numerous lives. So- So I'm also a retired commercial insurance executive, which I, basically, thinking of this, see that this can ultimately render these properties uninsurable, and that is totally not acceptable, in my opinion. These properties were bought in good faith, by good people, to support this town and the tax basis of this town. So I'm asking you to please reconsider and take this back to its original plotting and the way it was when we all purchased it in good faith. I thank you for your time.
Judy Oswald?
Good evening. My name's Elise Campaign, 1314 Wayne Street. Thank you all for your service to the town. I am here on a new topic. I am here to speak for myself, as myself, as a board member of Charleston Waterkeeper, and on behalf of our 2,500 supporters here in Mount Pleasant, about cleaning up Shem Creek. We have a tremendous opportunity to make Shem Creek our iconic waterway, swimmable, and safe for recreation, and we have our work cut out for us. As you know, 87% of the sites that are sampled are currently exceeding the geometric mean for what is safe to get in the water, and yet we see people in the water all the time. I'm really excited to see that the town staff, Hillary Repick, others on the town, you're doing a lot of great work. You're working on septics, you're working on stormwater maintenance, you're doing some more monitoring work. This is all really good. These are good efforts in the right direction. And what I'm here to say is I want to encourage you to keep up the great work, but to do more to let people know of what you're doing, why you're doing it. These are significant investments, and there's going to be more work that is ongoing. And not only does that give some transparency for people to know about your plans and why we're making these investments, but hopefully it will help catalyze businesses and other homeowners to do their part, because it's going to take collective action to make Shem Creek the safe, wonderful waterway we all want it to be. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Fred Whittle?
Hello. I'm Judy Oswald, 1111 Pauline Avenue. I am the shelter manager and also the manager of Unchained Charleston. Unchained Charleston is programmed through Pet Helpers that helps dogs that live tethered 24/7. The majority of our cases see animals living with no access to enrichment, exercise, proper sheltering, and have limited contact with humans. Because of this isolation, many develop extreme psychological and behavioral issues. Due to their undersocialization, exposure to extreme elements, storms, and unknown animals at large, they can often live in a state of anxious fight-or-flight fear. It is unfortunate to see their active defensiveness against new stimulation, people, or places, but perfectly understandable considering how they've been raised. One such story is of a dog named Aurora, who was surrendered through Unchained Charleston to Pet Helpers eight months ago. Aurora had been gifted to a family who lived just north of Park West at six weeks old. As a mastiff mix, Aurora's energy and size quickly overwhelmed the family, and she was eventually tethered to a tree in the backyard at the age of four months. She remained there day in and out for the next five years. During this period, her only human interaction occurred once daily while filling her food and water bowls. She ate her own stool to keep her area clean and had a small dog, Igloo, which she had mostly outgrown years prior. Her entire worldview was the circumference of an old oak tree and the limitations of a four-and-a-half-foot tether for over 2,000 days of her life. Once she arrived at Pet Helpers, the long process of socialization began. She had never been inside a building or walked on leash. She recoiled from human touch. After eight months of being in our care and working with our canine trainer and staff, she is thriving and learning to be a mentally healthy animal. Sadly, there are so many more Aurora's out there that need our help to receive the basic care and life that should be their right. Her story is just one example of why we're asking you to support and pass this ordinance for humane treatment of dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Clydey DeBrew?
Fred Whittle, 78 Ashley Point Drive. I'm here to speak about item number seven under Planning A, V, and 6. I applaud the thoughtful, deliberate planning guidance provided to this council by the Town Planning Commission regarding what they and I believe is the proper and reasonable planning course of action, allowing the draft comprehensive plan to be adopted by council prior to making changes to the heights outlined in the Plan's Guidelines. I urge town council to accept their recommendation and to vote down these changes. Thank you.
Anna Gruinlo?
My name is Clydey DeBrew, representing the Miller family, 512 Johnny Dodds Boulevard. Again, I'm here requesting your reconsideration for lowering the height restriction of the property. As mentioned on several occasions, my family has supported and respected the administration of the town of Mount Pleasant and for decades. Former mayors Francis Coleman, Groggy Darby, Johnny Dodds, Dick Jones, Linda Page, Billy Swales, we're all family friends. I would like to share something with you that you might find interesting. It's because this was when Mount Pleasant was a small town, no longer a small town. This is a letter from...
Please get to the clerk.
Okay. She, darling, to my dad, regarding my now-deceased brother. It was, he was being ticketed for not having a warning device on his bicycle. And that, I say that because that's the history of my family with this town. It was a small town, no longer. I'm asking each of you to put yourself in our position. For eight years, we've tried to lease or sell this property with no success. We've had three contracts, multiple plans being presented. We have followed all of the rules, but the rules keep changing. Please consider implementing the suggestions of all the members of the comprehensive plan and do as they did. They voted unanimously not to lower the height of this hub area. Thank you.
Trenum Walker?
My name is Anna Greenlow, and I'm here on behalf of the owners of 966 Key Colony Court. You've already heard a lot of what's going on there, but the owners asked me to read this letter. It's written by a man, so it's going to come off a little awkward. My wife, Anna Maria, and I purchased 966 Key Colony just two months ago. We have a salon business in downtown Charleston and hope to retire here one day. We love this town and this property. It was the perfect location between our two favorite places, Sullivan's Island and downtown Charleston. We, along with the neighborhood, asked town council to honor the professional opinion of staff and the recommendation of the Planning Commission to adopt the applications. And personally, I would just like to ask that you protect my clients and friends and all of these families in their property interest.
Pam Ireland?
Good evening, Mayor Haney, council members. My name is Trenum Walker, 66 Hazel Street. I'm here on behalf of the Miller family to address the proposed ordinance reducing heights in certain locations in the overlay district. For the last 70 years, the Miller family has owned this four-and-a-half-acre parcel. I think you are all familiar with it. It was once the site of Miller Cadillac. This site is desperately in need of redevelopment. That redevelopment is not only in the interest of the Miller family, but also in the interest of the town. They've had it under contract three times, and every time they've had it under contract, as Clydey said, the rules have changed and the purchaser has walked. We ask that town council respect and follow the recommendation of the Planning Commissioners not to proceed with this height change at this time. That was not a split vote of the Planning Commission. It was unanimous. Every person on the Planning Commission stated their view that this should be wound into the land use plan of the comp plan. They also pointed out that this site in particular was prime for economic development, and the commissioner who made the motion, Mr. Neal, asked that that be shown on the motion, even though it doesn't reflect that in the minutes. They also said it would be entirely unfair to give a haircut of 80 feet to 55 feet. There are other ways to address your concerns. Rather than railroading this ordinance, we ask that you look to collaborative solutions. No one from the town has approached the property owner to say, "What would you like? Can you work with us? Can we work together?" Property owner's the most important person. This ordinance ignores the voices of the property owner, ignores the Planning Commissioners. There are other ways to deal with this: setbacks, stepped heights, and buffers. We ask that council act fairly towards these owners, act collaboratively with these owners, and respect the unanimous decision of the Planning Commission. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. I just want to say, I did... Hello? Sir? I'm sorry, I forgot your name. I'm Kathy Ling, I'm her economic development chair. I did call Shannon Miller, had a very nice conversation with her, and I actually referred someone to her for a great project. So I don't know how that's turned out, but yes, some of us have been working on this.
Well, thank you very much, and it just shows that I didn't know all the facts. Thank you.
Time is up. Ed Navarro?
Hi, Pam Ireland. First, I want to commend you all for what I thought was a really valuable and constructive council meeting or retreat a couple of weeks ago. I was really pleased to see a lot of discussion about the comp plan and some suggested modifications by planning staff to the town hub building details, which I believe are the result of some great meetings we've had and a lot of collaboration. Tonight, you're going to be voting on reductions to building height limits in areas that are currently 80 feet. These broad guardrails are critical now. They do buy enough time for the comp plan to be approved and the special area plans to be fully fleshed out. That process could take a year or two, according to the comp plan's own timetable. As a member of the comp plan, I know that there are many tweaks and improvements that can be made, but it takes time to do those. Things like adding the concept of stories to feet, improving methods of measurement so that it encourages better architecture, and putting in place details like step backs that promote better, you know, sort of designs for large parcels of 10 acres or more. There's going to be time to do all of that, but right now, you have the ability to protect us all from things like high rises. I noticed that one gentleman mentioned Hotel Indigo. That's actually approximately 55 feet tall. As a person who lives off of Wingo Way, I can tell you it's very, very difficult to get in and out of that accessway. And when heights were raised a few years ago, no one went to the property owners to say, "We've increased your value. Now give the town a big check for that." Things go up and down, zoning changes over time. And so I think what you need to do is to consider what the town's condition is in right now and what you need to have it going forward. You can protect us, and we don't need a robust economic development to have high rises. I think we all know that we can still get great economic development. Thank you.
David Quick?
Ed Navarro, 1406 Smythe Street. I'd like to chat about the building height change. Our group owns Bowman Place. You may know it as the Nordstrom Rack, or the Dick's Sporting Goods, or my favorite, the Kudzu Bakery property. So the ordinance, under consideration, changes the height limit on our property from 80 feet to 45. A little bit about our property. It's one of the largest on Johnny Dodds at 14 acres. I think we have about the most frontage at about 850 feet. We don't abut any residential property, and we're surrounded by three major roads: Bowman Road, Johnny Dodds, and 526. So it doesn't seem like with those characteristics, we should be at the bottom of the height limit of 45 feet. Currently, we're in the medical health and wellness zone. That seems to make a lot of sense. We have two small buildings under development on the property, and we have a tremendous amount of interest from medical folks. And with the uncertainty in retail in terms of what's happening, I think it's clear that medical's going to be part of our future. The concern about the 45 feet is certain uses. Examples would be the Hungry Neck MUSE Building, or a full-service hospital wouldn't be able to be placed on the property with that 45-foot height limit. So we'd like to ask that the council consider keeping us in the medical zone height limit as we are today, and that will allow us to accommodate any potential medical uses over the long term. And thanks for your service, and thanks for your time. Thank you very much.
Michael German?
Hi, I'm David Quick. Address is 1502 Village Square. I've lived in Mount Pleasant for 30 years, and applaud you all for your service and the staff service. We live in a great town. I'm concerned about our quality of life, though, and particularly the environment. And I know you guys mostly were elected on a quality-of-life platform, and I think there's some talk right now about a resilience committee that will address flooding, but I think we really need to also include sustainability in that realm, and we have a lot of talent in this town that knows how we can do things a little bit better. I think we need to try to start planting more trees and bring back the green referendum to vote for green space. And there are a lot of other issues that we could be addressing if we could maybe create a green plan similar to what the City of Charleston's Sustainability and Resilience Committee has done and are relooking at right now. They meet tomorrow, and they do a lot of good work. It's a citizens committee along with business interests and elected officials. I think we could be really trying to make sure our air and water remains clean and that we can address things like the Shem Creek issue that was just brought up earlier. And I also want to say that I applaud you for addressing this issue with animal welfare. We could also be looking into other issues like that. So thank you so much for everything you all do and making Mount Pleasant a great place to live. Bye.
Sir?
Michael German, 385 Grace Street, Mount Pleasant. I live in the wonderful settlement community of Snowden, which is not a part of the town of Mount Pleasant. However, we are your neighbors. We've been your neighbors. I've been there. While I'm 66 years old, but I've been there all my life, other than a few stents, military, just being away from that. But my reason for being here, I hear echoes and soundbites, I could have made a wonderful speech. Quality of life, Shem Creek. I'm talking about the Wando River and our situation. We've got an opportunity, you've got an opportunity, to do something that can show that you are really our neighbors. Seward, we live in Snowden. Like I said, we're not a part of the town of Mount Pleasant. The majority of the people do not want to be a part of the town of Mount Pleasant for various reasons. However, we've got lines coming through right now in our neighborhood that we can prevent another Shem Creek from happening if you do the right thing and just allow us to tie in. We're not axing for anything. We don't want you to give us anything but the fair and impartial opportunity to improve our quality of life. That's all. It's not a tough decision. It's not a difficult decision. It's not complicated. It's a simple, do the right thing. I heard you talk about animals. I heard him talk about everything else. I'm a human being. Just want a better quality of life, and the opportunity is there to make that happen right now. Please do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right?
Thank you. That concludes our public comment section of our agenda. This moves us on to item number seven as amended, which is our consent agenda items, items that have received...
Motion to approve item 7B, 7C, 7D, and 7F.
We have a motion to approve items 7B, C, D, and F. Is there a second?
It's all of the consent agenda except for the two that are taken out.
Except for as we amended. We have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the stated consent agenda items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda items pass unanimous.
Final reading of the remaining consent agenda items.
All right. This brings us to item eight, which is planning, and Mr. Ulmer will lead us through this.
Motion to approve item A1.
We have a motion to approve item A1, which is an annexation.
Second.
Second.
Snowden Community?
Mr. Chairman, point of order...
We have a motion and a second.
Point of order, we haven't done the planning committee minutes.
The what?
Planning committee minutes. Planning committee minutes.
Oh, those are the links.
That's the links for people to follow.
Oh, okay, okay.
We don't have to do the minutes. So we have a motion and a second to approve item eight A1, which is the ordinance annexation of eight tenths of an acre in Snowden. I believe this is in response to receive sewer.
Yes, sir.
As is the policy of Mount Pleasant Water Works. That's something we just heard addressed. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve item eight A1, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
It's first reading, ordinance number 20009.
This moves us to item A2.
Yes, we'll handle two, three, and four together, and Ms. Cannon will take this item, these items.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon.
Good evening, thank you. As Mr. Alma said, this request will include these three together, and it is a request to rezone 18 parcels in a development known as Sullivan's Point. As you can see there, it's a fairly small development off of Ben Sawyer Boulevard, Key Colony Court. There's a total of 21 units. 18 parcels are before you tonight. This development was originally approved in 2015 in accordance with the provisions that were in effect at that time. The underlying zoning was the same as it is today, it was area-wide business. However, it was located in the, what was known at that time as the Coleman-Ben Sawyer Urban Corridor Overlay District. That overlay district that was in effect at the time allowed single-family residential, townhouses, duplexes, mixed use. It also allowed no minimum lot sizes, and it had a allowed height and density that was later amended. So when it was approved, it was under the AB zoning as it is now, and it was in the urban corridor overlay district. So the existing development is comprised of 16 detached single-family, three townhouse units, and two duplex units. Those heights range between 40 and 55 feet, and the lot sizes vary between 830 and a little over 4100 square feet. An amendment occurred in 2015, it was otherwise known as the Town's Growth Management Plan, that did away with certain densities throughout the town, and that included in the overlay district. There were certain incentives and bonus densities that this particular development did take advantage of through some design criteria that was approved. So that amendment took place in 2015, and then in 2016, there was a further amendment that reduced heights throughout various areas, and it included this one here. So the height went from what was approved originally at 55 feet to 45 feet along Coleman. More recently, there was an amendment in 2018, November 2018, that removed this portion of the Ben Sawyer Boulevard from rifle range to the bridge from the overlay district. Along with this amendment, there was a removal of single-family residential units from the overlay. So those earlier amendments eliminated certain development standards, the height, the density, the lot sizes, things like that. With this 2018 amendment, this whole portion was removed from the overlay district. What that meant was the permitted uses were no longer allowed. What allowed those residential uses was the overlay district. What we were left with was the underlying AB, area-wide business district. What's allowed in that district as far as residential uses is just multifamily, and that's a conditional use. The single-family, the townhouse, and the duplexes were no longer allowed. So what you had was not only a development that was nonconforming with regard to certain development standards, but it was nonconforming with regards to the actual permitted use. So the residential uses were no longer permitted. Based on the nature of the development and the complexity of the overlay district and its multiple amendments, the best solution moving forward was to make the underlying zoning match what was constructed on the ground. So merely putting this back in the overlay wouldn't fix the underlying problem of the fact that it's not a permitted use anymore.
Point of information?
Yes.
Can we separate these questions? Like, it's kind of combined here. Like, item two, it says to rezone it from area-wide business to townhouse district, and then the request to put them in the overlay. I mean, can I, can we split those two items, or they have to be approved or denied together?
First reading tonight, so if it moves forward, it would have to be approved as is, and then we can discuss possible amendments at final reading. However, at final reading, I'm not sure of the practical effect of splitting those.
Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval of both the underlying zoning and the reinstatement of the overlay. Planning Committee recommended the approval of the underlying zoning and recommended denial. I think those could be, as the ordinance before you tonight has those two things together.
All right, in light of item eight A7, which is going to, which is where we're going to discuss potential revisions to the nonconforming ordinance, I make a motion to defer items eight, two, three, and four.
We have a motion to defer items eight, two, three, and four. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We're in discussion. Mr. O'Rourke?
I don't know if the question's for Jake, but as it's deferred, where does it go then? What's the next step?
Well, ideally, if we can revise the ridiculous nonconforming ordinance that says you can't rebuild your house if it burns down, there's no need to rezone.
But I meant, will it go back to the planning committee for a recommendation to come back here?
Who would know that? Yes.
It would go to the planning committee. This is a planning item.
Wouldn't it just be deferred to next month?
I mean, just defer it to next month's council meeting is what I meant.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, if we voted on this, then we still have an opportunity to go back and revisit, because then we'll have second reading, where we can make the amendments or the changes, correct?
Let me just mention, in discussion of this, everybody wants to fix the problem. Nobody wants to devalue everyone's home, nor do we want to go back and do an overlay district that caused problems community-wide. So we're in a conundrum here. And what we're trying to do, and the reason that item A7 was put on here, is so that no one has to worry, like these citizens are tonight, because zoning changes all the time, that if they had a loss, that they could not reinstate their home as they know it. So that's what we're trying to fix, more than piecemeal of an overlay here and an underlying zoning there. We want to fix what you get when you're grandfathered in, if you have a nonconforming, because it's not just about this one, this will be for the rest of the time of Mount Pleasant. And so we want to come up with a good nonconforming ordinance as opposed to putting zonings back on that previous councils took off, and then we're playing zoning games. The point is that citizens know exactly what they can rebuild, which is what they already have. Yes, ma'am? Ms. Whitley?
Even a change to the nonconforming ordinance would only take care of part of this. The underlying zoning of these properties is currently commercial, and what is built there is residential. So what the recommendation of the planning committee was to do was to go ahead and rezone the properties as requested, but then hold off on the reinstatement of the overlay district until such time as we can address the nonconforming issues. So I'm comfortable moving forward with first reading, and then we can split it out at second reading. But I would like to give these homeowners some certainty tonight to understand that we're going to address this rezoning, and then, and then as we, and then the nonconforming issue can be addressed in planning committee final recommendation made to council, and we can move forward with first and second reading on that. So I will not be in favor of deferring this.
Let me get a legal point. If this passes first reading tonight, are the homeowners any better or worse off? Because the ordinance won't be enacted until second reading, anyway.
Right, ordinance would not take effect until final reading, anyway. So there'd be no substantive change at this point.
So just passing this at first reading, even though we're going to go back and change things, the owners are, they have no more relief after first reading than they do if it's deferred, is that correct?
That is correct. The only thing that would be altered is potentially the time schedule.
Because this will delay it by a month.
Right.
Ms. Lanning?
So I am in agreement with Councilwoman Whitley. I believe that clearly something happened here that was unintended consequence in the excitement to make a change that a lot of people were in favor of. And I actually do believe that we should at least make sure these folks know that we are serious about allowing their properties to be rebuilt if needed. And the best way to do that, it sounds like, is to at least give the first part of this. And it will, I mean, a delay of a month might not sound like a lot to you, but we had people almost in tears here tonight. We had people that are really worried. We have people that have all kinds of commitments on time and are traveling all over the world. We don't need to drag this out. I think I'm going to be against a deferral.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a second. Mr. Chapman, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to go forward tonight as the one vote that tried to put the overlay district back. I think we need to at least start tonight with putting the zoning back. And I'll just let the chips fall where they may on the overlay district part, but I don't believe that this one individual piece of land, putting the overlay district that was there on this one piece of land, is going to hurt anything. So I'm ready to go forward with what we've got on the agenda tonight.
Mr. Rambo?
So in light of the discussion, I just want to clarify with legal that when it comes to second, if we do say approve this tonight, and it comes to second reading, that we can split those two things out?
Yes, sir, that'd be the time.
So I'll withdraw, if you'll withdraw your second, I will draw my motion.
Okay, so the motion to defer is withdrawn, as is the second?
Yep.
Okay.
I move, oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve items, first reading of items eight A, two, three, and four.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Let me ask a question, then. So that we're not piecemeal doing this in the future, we're still having a discussion when we get to item seven about what to do about nonconforming properties, so that we're not just looking at 21 units, we're looking at how to handle this townwide so that people aren't afraid next time, because zonings and overlays will get changed throughout the town. Okay. So we have a motion to approve items two, three, and four. This would be first reading. Any separating out things like overlays and all that can be done at second reading. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you.
It's first reading of ordinance numbers 20010, 20011, and 20012.
That was easy, Michelle.
All right, this brings us to, let's see, that was items two, three, and four. This brings us to item five. This is item eight A5.
And staff, mayor, and council will present these two together. Number five deals with the text of the zoning code and any changes that would be made dealing with building heights. And item six is the height map that reflects on a map the potential building height, so they go together. You're familiar with the work that the planning committee has been doing, looking at various building heights. And at a couple meetings ago, the council moved this particular topic forward through to the Planning Commission for a public hearing. I've got to go back. This is the current height map, and the focus of the discussions has been on our corridors. Specifically, it started with the Johnny Dodd's Boulevard in looking at potential changes to the heights. This is the current height map. On the ends, on both end of the Johnny Dodd's corridor, you have that purple, dark purple color, that is the 80-foot allowed height limit. On the left side, where the bridge comes in, part of that area that's in purple is also part of the waterfront gateway district, so it's not within the Johnny Dodd's overlay. So you don't see a boundary in there in this, on this particular map. This is a composite. And so what's been happening is focusing on primarily the two ends, and this is at the 17 Ravenel Bridge end. This is, as somebody mentioned, a hospitality economic development zone in that overlay. And we had, and studied various, and provided to the committee the heights of various existing buildings for reference. Likewise, at the opposite end, at 526, that was in proximity to the hospital. It was designated as a health and wellness slash economic development zone, and it too allowed for the 80-foot height limit in that general location. Through the course of a variety of options and alternatives, the planning committee sent forward changes to the height map, and they look, and they're labeled as option C. And what happens is the 80-foot height limit in purple remains immediately around the hospital property. 65 feet would be retained on parts of the hospitality and medical zone and on the waterfront side. 55 feet would be the new height limit here where Town Hall sits, in this general vicinity between McGrath Darby and Houston North Cut. 45 feet would be the proposed height at the general vicinity of Bowman and the ramp leading up to US 17. And finally, a small portion that was previously included in that hospitality area near Melvin Bennett, between Melvin Bennett and Bowman, it's actually in the other corridor section. So we've got a variety of these here. That would be reduced from 80 to 40 feet. And then the remainder in the middle would be retained along that sort of commercial corridor at 55 feet. So this is what went forward to Planning Commission for a public hearing. You've heard earlier, Planning Commission recommended denial of the request, nine to zero. And then at Planning Committee last week, the committee recommended moving forward with these changes by a vote of three to one. Be happy to answer questions as you move through your discussion, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we handle five and six...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, we what?
That we take items five and six together, since they're essentially, they've been presented together, and they're, and they go together, whatever we do.
So you want to make a motion to do that?
That's my motion.
So it's only that we consider them both together?
We don't need a motion.
Let me ask a point of order.
You don't need a motion. If someone makes a motion...
That's what I'm doing.
...we can make them at the same time.
But is the motion to approve or to deny? Or to disapprove?
I'll move to approve to start off with, and then I'll have a statement.
So the motion is to approve items five, items eight A5, and items eight A6. One is the text, and the other is the actual map. So the motion is to approve. We have a second. We're in discussion. Yes, sir. Mr. Chapman?
Mr. Mayor, I was the one in that vote from the planning committee. And I want to begin with the fact that I'm not against lowering heights at all, but what I'm for is managed growth, not just changes because someone's afraid property might change hands. I'm also for property rights, as well as the rule of law. Robert Kennedy said that the future isn't a gift. It is to be achieved, and this is especially given the challenges facing government today. Many of these challenges are a product of not anticipating long-term consequences of short-term politically popular decisions. The Planning Commission turned this down, nine to nothing. They spent a lot of time on it, and said, "Wait for the comprehensive plan to be completed." During the retreat, we talked about completing the plan, and then take each of the hubs and analyze them strategically, and then make whatever changes we think are necessary. We also talked about height versus floors. This doesn't do that. This only talks about heights. Item nine on our agenda tells the DRB to study that issue and bring it back. We don't have it yet. We don't have it yet. They want, they, they should bring back their recommendations, and I presume it's for the comprehensive plan, which we don't have yet. I don't think these items are ready yet. We're not ready to receive first reading. And it was said in the planning committee that, that we can go ahead with these changes and then change them back again with whatever we decide. Whether height versus floors. Businesses want consistency and structure. The structure is the comprehensive plan, and we need to complete it before we start changing heights, as the planning commission said, nine to nothing. Don't do it. And, and I will vote against my own motion.
Thank you. Who wanted, yes, sir, Ms. Santos?
Yeah, again, like the last issue, this is only first reading. So by, by voting for this now, it, it doesn't set it in stone. We still have an opportunity to work on it. You've heard of a lot of citizens lately really want us to lower the heights. I'm not saying that we'll end up doing that at the end of the day, but certainly we can have first reading right now to approve it, and then we can defer until such time, as you say, that we go through the planning commission again, back to the planning committee again, go through the comprehensive plan, and then come up with an idea, then we can have our, our final reading. So by having first reading doesn't mean it's set in stone. We have, always have an opportunity to change on second reading, but at least it lets the citizens know that we're considering this. Everybody I've talked to pretty much has said that we need to do this, that we need to look at it. So I think at least it lets them know the direction that we're looking into, but it doesn't mean that it's set in stone. The second, the second vote that we have will actually be the one that'll count.
All right. Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Can the audience see this map? They can? Okay. So in order to avoid sounding too dramatic, I'm not going to say exactly what I'm thinking, but when you look at this map, it just looks absurd. It is a patchwork, and it is so arbitrary looking. And it's, it's as if we are sitting up here saying, we're in charge of everything. Yes, we were elected to do a job, and that's to represent the people. But there's only a small number of the people in this room. All 88,000 to 90,000 of our citizens are affected if we don't have the finances going forward to pay for things without raising taxes. Imagine you're the property owner, like some of the people in this room, where you bought this property with certain availability and certain restrictions and certain allowances. And then all of a sudden, you're looking at something that could be a tremendous drop in your value. That may not matter to you, and you may think those are business people and they don't need our help, but they own that property. So yes, like Councilman Chapman, I'm very much for property rights. There are ways to address this. One of them is what, as economic development chair, I've already done, which is to reach out to one of the owners of this property to talk about, not just talk about, ask, what kind of things do you have in mind? What are you thinking about? Are you thinking about something that's 80 feet in height? And the answer I got was not necessarily. Here's a couple different ideas we had. And I thought of some ideas of my own and have already referred people. So there are ways that we can work together as a community to find things that actually serve our people. One of the things I've heard many times since elected is that we want more jobs that are high-paying on this side of the bridge, so everyone doesn't have to go into North Charleston or downtown to work, especially a lot of our young people. We want more of our young people to live on this side of the bridge and not have to leave their home. In order to afford to do that, they have to have higher-paying jobs on this side of the bridge. What if, in one of these places where we have an 80-foot height restriction now, and we lower it to 55, what if we could have had a global headquarters that made the decision to come here and then, or were thinking about coming here, and then they found out we lowered this height, and suddenly they can't fit what they're going to need to be a global headquarters in Mount Pleasant? If I could think of a good name, I'd probably create controversy, whatever I thought of. But if I could think of a good name, I'd give you an example and say, hey, what if we could have 1,000 terrific jobs come to Mount Pleasant, high-paying jobs, that will help us financially as a community, provide jobs, provide services? Oh, by the way, if we lower this height, they can't come here. So I'm going to be against this because I, I agree the comprehensive plan should be completed first, and I also don't believe this is the right way to solve this problem.
Can we just move?
Not yet. We can't call the question if there's anyone remaining who wants to speak? Any other council members? Yes, sir. Mr. Rambo?
So I just want to say that I agree in principle with lowering heights, as I heard throughout the election from just about every person that I spoke to. However, I don't know that this map is perfect, and I wish we could amend it tonight, but I understand that we can't amend till second reading. So there's certainly some amendments that I will be offering at second reading, but since it's just an up or down vote tonight, then that's what it is, so.
Yes, sir. Mr. O'Rourke?
The only comment I'll make, not a question, is that if, if this is approved tonight, we all have to understand that there are violations to this already all over, all over, all over this map. There, there are things that are in place that are higher than what these, what these, what, what these are listed at, and I think that's a problem. Second comment to Gary about the, the, do the first reading and go to the next. I, I mean, I, I think that's really good in concept, but I don't know if we're even there yet. And once the first reading, then the meter's kind of clicking, and then we're kind of hurrying maybe. But I, I believe this may need to be looked at a little bit longer, so that's probably why I vote no.
If I may, then I don't see anyone else who wants to speak. I want to address this a little bit. The first thing is to consider, we are one of the only, or the only municipality in South Carolina that votes on the impact assessment, not the fee, but the assessment. And that's when there's a proposed development, depending on what category it's in, how many car trips a day that it generates. So one of the things I would say in favor of, of lowering heights is if you don't think our infrastructure is strained right now, do what I've done the last couple of days. Friday, Monday, and today, I've been all over town from this end all the way to the far end of, of the north end of town, going to meetings. And I was amazed, again, that at 10:30 in the morning, I'm sitting in traffic at the intersection of, of Highway 41 and 17 with a long wait at 10:30 in the morning. That's not rush hour. So to say that a building height of 80 feet would cure some problem, or that you could even build to that, you're assuming that when we get to the point of doing an impact assessment, that, that that assessment is going to be approved, and that's not necessarily so, especially given the amount of traffic that we have now. About the comprehensive plan, it is not dependent on building heights, nor have been, building heights dependent on the comprehensive plan. We have several members of the forum who have been very good about explaining that. They refer to each other. They are not dependent on each other. So I, I don't buy into that. The other is, when you talk about density and hubs, we got at the Transportation Committee meeting on Monday, information from CARDA on their study, where our highest-density hubs with the, like the Boulevard that had unlimited density, and Oyster Park, which has 50 units per acre, 200 and something units on, on five acres with retail at the bottom, the ridership on that route of CARDA on Coleman Boulevard, and all of these are built right where there are bus stations, is four riders per hour, four, at a cost to CARDA of $17.11 per trip. So if we're thinking either in the comp plan or, or height maps, that high density and people parking their cars and riding buses is getting ready to happen in the town of Mount Pleasant, that's not my opinion. That's a fact that's on the record from CARDA that was reported on Monday. The other is, we always hear when we lower heights that we're taking something, but heights have been raised. I understand that on one of the properties, and I don't want to pick on any owners, but one of the properties we heard a lot tonight, the height used to be 50 feet. It was 50 feet until, I think, 2011, and it's now 80 feet. So when that height was raised, was that a giving? Were they taxed on that? Did the, did the value go up? Did we get more tax revenue from that? No. But every time we lower heights, that's considered to be a taking in, in the common vernacular, but it is not legally a taking. We know that. And then if you look at Patriots Point, council, before y'all came on, before the new members came on, where we had a 50-feet height level, the developer came in and said, I want 80 feet here, 65 here, and 50 feet there, and, and by, I think, a 6-3 margin, council approved it. And what we always hear is, look over there. And they pointed over to one that's not in that area, was not in that height zone, and said, you gave them 82 feet. Well, we didn't, but somebody in the town of Mount Pleasant did. So everybody looks down the street and says, well, if there's 80 there, and I was on this council in 2016 when that developer came here and wanted 125 feet at the base of the bridge. Why? Because they had 80, but 125 worked better. It was a better economic model. So whatever we raise it to, we're not really just raising it to that. We're looking at what someone's going to point to and say, well, if, if that's 50, then I need 80 to make, to make this work. I'm not comfortable with every provision in this map. I'm going to suggest some changes at the second reading, but I'm voting for this tonight because we've listened to the citizens, and they want us to lower heights, and we can get this right at second reading, just like we said we were going to do with the previous zoning thing. Are there any other comments before we vote? The motion we have before us is, this is to approve items eight A, five, and six, which is the text and also the height map on building heights. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
No.
Mr. O'Rourke votes no. Mr. Rambo?
Aye.
Mr. Rambo votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Ms. Whitley?
Aye.
Ms. Whitley votes yes. Mr. Chapman?
No.
Mr. Chapman votes no. Ms. Corley?
Aye.
Ms. Corley votes yes. Ms. Hyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Hyatt votes yes. Ms. Lanning?
No.
Ms. Lanning votes no. Mayor Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Haney votes yes.
By a vote of 63, the motion to approve passes.
That's first readings. The ordinance numbers two, two zero zero one three and two zero zero one four.
This brings us to item eight, A, seven? Yes, that was five and six. This brings us to item seven, discussion and possible action on potential revisions to ordinance provisions which deal with nonconforming properties. Mr. Rambo, I believe you put this on the agenda, so would you like to?
Yes, so. Even before being on council, watching meetings on Facebook Live or YouTube or whatever, and then in since the few meetings that I've been here, this has come up a number of times as we look to make zoning changes or height changes or whatever. And so to me, as a lot of residents have pointed out tonight, if you have a, a property or a project, whether it be residential or commercial, that's approved and, and you build it as approved, council should not be able to come in two years later, change the zoning, and then some catastrophic event happens to your house, and then, oh, no, sorry, you can't rebuild it now.
Right.
Is that even legally defensible? And I, that's rhetorical, but. I mean, seriously, I, it's a ridiculous ordinance. And when you look at some of the other ordinances around Charleston City, Charleston County, they all have provisions in there that if the zoning is changed, if you're going to redevelop the property, you have to abide by the new zoning laws or, or changes. But if it's some sort of catastrophic act of God or, or what have you, fire, flood, something like that, and, and your house gets torn down or, or whatever, you are allowed to rebuild to the same exact footprint, to the same exact height that you once had. And to me, that's just the right thing to do. And also, it, it will take away this crutch from us and from the Planning Commission to not want to make changes that our residents want to see in our zoning because of nonconformity. To me, it's just a basic property rights issue.
So do you have a motion?
I should have done the motion before I talked, so I apologize for that.
That's all right.
I have a motion, I make a motion to send this to the Planning Commission for further study and a, and a recommendation for a revised ordinance from them.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'd like to hear from the Chair of the Planning Committee.
Yes, Jake and, Councilman Rambo and I have discussed this, and this is something that the Planning Committee took a look at. And one of the concerns that we had in an initial discussion was, the whole concept of nonconforming properties is that what is nonconforming is, I think the word that one of staff use was repugnant to the zone. And so the, the reason for that nonconforming ordinance was that you want the redevelopment of that property to conform to this newer zoning and that kind of thing. But what's not contemplated in our ordinance, but is contemplated in multiple ordinances of our neighboring communities, is allowing, in the case of disasters, for there to be a rebuild. So I'm, I'm supportive of this coming to Planning Committee or Commission, how, whatever order it needs to go in.
Does it have to go to Planning Commission?
Or can it go to committee?
Just, well, you're referring it to the committee, but we'll ask.
Well, he said commission in his motion.
I think the motion was for commission, right?
The motion was for commission. I guess my question is, does it have to go?
Excuse me, I thought the motion was to committee because I.
But I thought you said committee.
He said commission.
Commission.
I thought I said commission. I meant to say commission.
You said commission?
Okay.
Excuse me. I'm glad you cleared that up.
It's a change in our zoning code, so.
So it has to go to?
It would have to go to the Planning Commission through any ordinance amendments in the future. What you're doing here would be asking the body that you appointed to look at planning and zoning items to study this for you, much like, say, in the past, they did a year's worth of work on buffering and landscaping. So you would ask the Planning Commission to study it and come forward with recommendations, and then we could take that through to the Planning Committee.
Okay. So it's, I, I apologize. It's to the commission. Got it?
Correct. Planning Commission.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to send the nonconforming properties proposed, to look for proposed revisions to the Planning Commission? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes nine, zero. That ends section eight, section eight A. We are now in section eight B, which is old business, which is two items of final reading.
Motion to approve item number one, the annexation.
All right. We have a motion to approve item number eight B one and a second. This is the annexation of the tract on Annie Laura Lane, of which we heard citizens addressing us this evening. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. How many nos? Four. So it passes five, four.
Final reading, ordinance number two zero 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 one.
And related, item B two is the, let's see, that's the zoning, I do believe? The zoning of the property that the, the vote was just on to annex. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second on item B two. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. The nos?
No.
Four nos. By five, four, the motion passes.
Final reading, ordinance number two zero 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 two.
So this brings us back to item seven A. This would be item B three, right, under old business. It moved from the consent agenda. This has to do with the Affordable Housing Project on Gregory Ferry Landing. I believe we all got an email about this today, and there's no major change in the proposal. This has to do with wording of, well, Jeff will explain it to us, but it's, don't anybody panic.
Yes, Mayor, as you recall, the Gregory Ferry, Ferry Landing PD is proposed to be amended to add 42 workforce housing units. The applicants were discussing the actual language with us the other day and wanted to make sure that it was clear that this would apply and provide housing for folks who make up to 80% of the area median income, which is different than our definition of affordable in Mount Pleasant because it allows a range of up to 120% of the area median. So their proposal would provide housing for folks in the lower-income ranges that would more likely need assistance, and so they just want to make it clear. So your ordinance language and the language within the PD and the impact assessment have been changed to reflect that and clarify that. The other is that they, their intent was to create a 75-year covenant restriction that that affordability would remain for that period of time. That, too, is now included. That wording is in the PD and impact statement language so that we have the ability to enforce that. So we provide new language, and it's attached to your agenda. And that's the purpose.
So the net effect of that is that since our ordinance allows for people who make more money to qualify, this narrows it more to people who have. more money to qualify, this narrows it more to people who have the most difficulty attaining housing in Mount Pleasant?
Yes, sir. More restrictive than, as otherwise defined in the ordinance.
Got it. Everybody clear on that?
Make a motion, we approve the ordinance, amended ordinance as described by staff.
So we need a motion to approve and a second, and then someone can make an amendment as stated by the planning director.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Now, would someone like to make a motion to amend?
I'll off the amendment for what Mr. Elmer presented.
Okay.
Second.
So first, we'll vote, is there, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, first, we'll vote on the amendment. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Now, we will call the question on the ordinance itself for final reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you all for your hard work and...
Final reading, ordinance number two zero 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 three.
Very good. All right, so as we jump the amended agenda...
Item nine?
Yes, item nine, committee action items. If you're, and if you're following at home, we're on the bottom of page five, which moves us to the top of page six, which has to do with approval to ask the design review board to study and make recommendations regarding building height and the number of floors within commercial structures.
Yes, sir. It comes up in the discussion you had on building heights. We talked about it, you talked about it at your retreat, the question about whether we measure height by feet, or we talk or insert the number of stories. And the suggestion was that our team of folks who work and serve on your design review board, many of whom are architects, could work with the staff to study this particular topic and develop some recommendations for council to consider through the planning committee first about how to potentially incorporate number of stories as the unit of measure, maybe as a substitute or maybe in addition to height in feet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and second, we're in discussion. Mr. O'Rourke.
Didn't we just pass, didn't we all just pass an ordinance that clearly specified heights and height restrictions?
Yes, sir.
Well, if we did that, and let's say they have great ideas and come back and say, "We should do it by floors," are we going to need to change, then, what we just passed? I'm just questioning the action we just took as compared to now. We're sending these people back to work to come up with ideas on whether it's better to do floors or feet when we just clearly passed an ordinance that says we are going to go by a tape measure.
Yes, Ms. Whitley.
One of the reasons that we talked about moving to either floors or combination, there would be a combination of floors and height, was one of the discussions that we had, was to enable there to be more diverse architecture. And then there was also discussion of where to measure, you know, where to measure that height, where you would measure it to be the livable space. So it is possible that this could make a change by adding floors without actually changing the heights at all, that this would just make a floor restriction and then change how height is measured so that the livable space is within that limit.
And I'll just jump in, I'll add, they're not mutually exclusive, you're right. The height limit can be, and we'll ask them to come back, fifty-five feet on usable space. And if the ordinance says, "But if you want to put a different shape on the roof so we don't have flat roofs, you get fifty-five feet of usable space, how that's defined and where we measured." So they're not, it's not one or the other. It can easily be both, is what I would say. Anyone else? Yes, sir. And remember, this is not to approve it. This motion is to go to the design review board, and they will come back with how that works. I know it works in other places, they have both.
I think it's a great idea. The point I would make is the same as Mr. O'Rourke, that we just passed something that specifically said height, nothing else. And just think about it next time we vote.
All right, the motion is to approve just to send this to the design review board to study and to make recommendations. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Did everyone vote?
I abstained. I didn't say aye or nay.
Okay. So we have, the motion passes eight to nothing with one abstention. Okay, this moves us on to item number ten, council, new business. Correct me, is there a... No. We've gotten past the... Got it. Got it. We're not to where we amended. All right, we're under new business, item A one. First reading of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance.
Motion to approve item A one.
Okay. We have a motion to approve and a second. Would someone like to just say what this is about, Mr. Rambo? Okay, Mr. Santos.
No, 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 I was going to say, "Thank you." Whoever made the motion.
Yeah, this came out of PLJ committee, and essentially, it was, in my opinion, I made the motion in PLJ, but in my opinion, when we received the agenda for council on like a Friday afternoon, and we're supposed to have read it, gathered input from citizens and everything by Tuesday afternoon, it's tough. So this, all this would do would put the timeline for, right now, for a council person to add something to the agenda, it has to be in by Thursday at four-thirty. This would move it to Wednesday at four-thirty, which in turn would give us the agenda twenty-four hours sooner so that we have more time to study it and get feedback from constituents. So all it does is it moves that timeline from Thursday to Wednesday.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. You know, for the last twenty years I've been serving on this council, we've never had any issues. And so I was, I'm just, I'm not against it, but I'm just saying, you know, we've never had any issues with this, so I'm not sure why we need this now. I mean, we get it, we go through the committees, and everybody tries to attend every committee. I know you, some people can't because they have jobs and children and things like that. I completely understand that, and I don't get to go to all of them, but I certainly read the minutes, and so I'm able to stay up on it. It's like I said, I mean, I don't have a big problem against it, I just don't think that there's a reason to do it. I haven't seen it in all these years that I've been on council, but if council feels like that they need extra time for something that might pop up on the agenda before, then certainly I'm not going to be against it, but I just think that the way we've done it all along has always worked for us well.
Did you really just say we've always done it this way?
We have always done it this way without any issues. Now, we have had some areas who tried to change it and have three people put things on the agenda for it to be able to be on an agenda, and thank God that failed. But yeah, we've seen some attempts before at it, but the timeline has always seemed to work. So I mean, if council feels like we need an extra day for something to be put on the agenda, I don't have any issue with it.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Hyatt.
Now, didn't staff say they would not necessarily be able to get us the agenda twenty-four hours ahead? That they would try, but it wouldn't necessarily happen because of...
We understand that it's council's desire to have the agenda sooner. And there are times when there's some complicated work product that may take a little longer, and we have to work through that on our side, but our full intent is that you have the agenda earlier than you typically get it.
Right. Because I'd hate for us to lose a day on our end and still not get it a day ahead, you know? Because by doing this, it takes a day away from us to submit things, right? So...
Ms. Landing?
So we lose a day, but...
I think two things on this. One is what it does, I believe, we did have some situations come up in the last year especially, where things were decided upon pretty last minute and suddenly showed up on the agenda that were fairly controversial. And so it did cause some extra problems. So I think part of it is that if we're adding something to the agenda, we should have thought it through ourselves pretty well, and if we really want it to be on there. The other thing is we had the process in place that it went through a committee, and only, only if the committee could not hear it, would you then put that item on the agenda, which certainly would have been well in time for what we're talking about tonight. And then suddenly, we got into a situation where we were having things go through committee, they were failing in committee, and we were still seeing things at it. So I mean, we've had a lot of inconsistency, so I'm hoping maybe this will help us have a little more time to get the agenda ready, to review it, and to be prepared for Tuesday night.
Thank you. All right, so the motion before us is to approve moving the deadline for council submissions for item to be on the agenda from Thursday at four-thirty PM to Wednesday, four-thirty PM, the week before the monthly council meeting. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the only question I have is, there may be some issue that comes up that is an emergency or whatever. We can still always call a special meeting. This doesn't preclude us from doing that, the way I read it.
No. This is what we submit to the agenda, and I guess, and I'll ask the attorney, legally, the notice, legal notice is six PM on Monday. So if there were some exigent circumstance, that's our buzz, legal buzzword of the year, that we, exigent? Yeah, yeah, it sounds painful. That we can put things on there, but we're saying it is our council custom that instead of me just, you know, reading something that I want to put on the agenda, doing it on Thursday, you don't get the agenda until Friday afternoon, that gives you Monday and not even all of Tuesday. I have to do it Wednesday if I'm just putting something on there because it's a hot-button item for me.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, by eight-one vote, the motion passes.
First reading, ordinance number two zero zero one six.
All right, this brings us, if we need it, to executive session on legal advice for these items, two A, B, C, D, E, and F. If we may, I'm not sure we need executive session. Chief, may we ask, are these all pretty standard mutual aid agreements? Is there anything new or different that council may need to retreat into executive session? There is? Okay, so the chief says we do. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? To receive legal advice on items ten A, two A through F? We have a motion, we have a second, we're in discussion before we vote, that post-executive session, council may take action on any item, including any subsection of any item listed on an executive session agenda, or discussed in an executive session during a properly noticed meeting. All in favor of the motion to enter executive session for these matters stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. I don't think we need to, but that's just me.
Okay.
Who was the second on that, please?
Hold on, please, yes. Hold on. We have, the vote carries, we are entering executive session.
Mayor, I think the clerk wants to know who gave the second.
I don't remember who gave the second.
I didn't hear a second.
You can put me down.
Thank you.
That resolves.
Oh, Ms. Whitley, I am lost without getting the answers from you.
Trista Kutcher is her name. Trista Kutcher.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that was quick.
That was quick.
She was cold.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, right? It seemed like it got colder.
Yeah.
I think it got colder.
They got the air on. They don't need it. Save some money.
All right, we have reconvened from executive session. There was no action taken, no votes were cast. However, we did receive legal advice on items ten A to A through F. Do we have a motion regarding these items?
Move to approve items two A through F.
We have a motion to approve and a second. I think there's no discussion. All in favor of the motion to approve these items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
Resolutions two hundred twenty-one, two hundred twenty-two, two hundred twenty-three, two hundred twenty-four, two hundred twenty-five, and two hundred twenty-six.
Okay, so we are now on item four, approval of East Cooper Community Outreach in Carolina Children's Charity as the twenty-twenty blessing of the fleet beneficiaries. Do you have a motion?
Yes, sir.
And we have a second by Mrs. Whitley. Any discussion?
Ms. Landing.
Landing.
Ms. Landing, I'm sorry, Ms. Landing. Motion by Mr. Santos, second by Mrs. Landing. All right, any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, discussion and possible action...
Good job, Steve.
Discussion and possible action regarding commercial impact fees. Ms. Landing put this on the agenda and...
Okay, we also had this on our agenda at the economic development...
We also had this on our agenda at the economic development meeting, and what we were doing is opening up an exploration of how impact fees are impacting our ability to attract great businesses to town, providing both services and jobs for our folks, and in the long run, providing a much stronger financial viability platform. And so, let's go ahead and have Ms. Sims, if you could please present what you have for us.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as Ms. Lanning said, this information was presented, some of this information was presented at this month's Economic Development Committee meeting. We were asked to bring it back with some additional information for you all tonight. So what we've done is pulled some hypothetical commercial development scenarios and calculated what their impact fees would be under the current 20% discount. Additionally, we calculated what these developments would bring in annually in taxes and fees to the town. In preparation for tonight's meeting, we are also asked to calculate what a 50% discount on impact fees would look like, as well as how many years it would take to essentially recoup that difference between the current 20% discount and the 50% discount. And that's the calculation that you see in the right on that, in kind of the green section on each of these. So you have printouts in front of you. I apologize, there was a lot of information to include on one, one particular slide. This first example is a family restaurant, translated, that's a fast food with a drive-thru. And so, we made some assumptions here, about a million dollars in sales, and under the current discount, impact fee discount, this generates about $419,000 in impact fees. Annually bringing in in taxes and fees, it's about $27,000. Under a calculation of a 50% discount in impact fees, you're looking at $262,000. So kind of that break-even point in between the current 20% discount and the 50% discount would be just under six years. Next example is standalone fine dining, what the manual classifies as a quality restaurant. There's some specific parameters behind that, but essentially, under the 20% discount in impact fees, it would generate about $90,000, with your annual taxes and fee revenue coming in just around $27,000. Under a 50% discount on impact fees, you'd be bringing in just about $56,500. So our break-even point between the two would be 1.25 years. And a general office building example, under the 20% discount would bring in about 33,000, or, excuse me, just under $34,000 in impact fees annually, just around $4,000. At a 50% discount in impact fees, it would bring in around $21,000, with your break-even point being a little over three years. And finally, an indoor activity center, this would be something similar to a bowling alley, a trampoline park, something, something of this, of that type. Under the current impact fee schedule, that would generate $172,000 annually. It would bring in about $92,000. Under a 50% discount in impact fees, it would bring in about $78,000, with that break-even point a little over 10 years.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sims. So, maybe you can all even jump to the conclusion of what we're trying to show here, but the first thing is that it's very difficult to prove a negative. So we know we've had a lot of applications for permits, but we also know that there's been a big upsurge in applications for permits in the town of Mount Pleasant from home-based businesses, online businesses, things of that nature, which don't necessarily involve employing a lot of our folks, or, or actually, in many cases, even providing many services to families in our community. So, what we did is we tried to take a combination of anecdotal information, which I'd like to share with you now, and, and then the numbers, and then start to look at, is there a better way to address this? Now, I'll just mention two different aspects to this. One is, I think a lot of us know we want to bring more services to this side of the bridge, so people have shorter car trips, don't have to go over the bridge for everything, but there's been the concern in the past that you can't, supposedly, that you cannot lower commercial impact fees without also lowering residential. And so that was a concern because we knew that we wanted to slow residential growth. So that's a separate discussion that I think we want to look at on a different level. But let me just share the anecdotal story. The anecdotal story, which I verified the other day, is we have a new childcare facility in the northern end of Mount Pleasant, on Bessemer Road, Kids Are Kids, and it only opened about a year and a half ago, and I was told when we went to the groundbreaking that had that been just, even just one year later, where they were encountering the mid-range that we went to, or the highest level that we went to where we are now, they would absolutely not have been able to make the numbers work, and they would not have come here. They would have actually chosen another part of the community, perhaps West Ashley, perhaps North Charleston. In the town of Mount Pleasant, and I know there's people in this room, including Ms. Sims, that can probably confirm this for me, there is a well-known, again, it's anecdotal, but there's a well-known thing that we actually have people having to get on waiting lists 18 months before they have a child, or at least, at the very least, when they're actually, when they find out they're pregnant, just to be able to get childcare. And many, many people living in Mount Pleasant need that two incomes to be able to afford to live here. So the idea that we don't have enough childcare? So here's an interesting thing I found out. That same owner would love, he's doing very, very well with Kids Are Kids, they're just about full already in just a year and a half, and he would love to open one on the other side of town. I know for a fact James B. Edwards has a long waiting list for their after-school program. There's a lot of other places in town. So, that said, I think the possibility that we do not want to keep things away that we really need for our citizens, and so we're creating another one of these unintended consequences by having such high impact fees. So, last couple of things to wrap this up, the break-even. The whole idea behind this is long-term financial viability. If we bring things like, let's use the standalone fine dining, which we don't have really any of in the northern end of Mount Pleasant, let's, let's use like the indoor activity. I'd rather just stick with the fine dining for now, we didn't do anything on childcare. But if we were to bring that, to that end of town, at a lower impact fee, which might actually open the door that they would come here, it would only take, in this example, one and a quarter years to break even with what we missed out on with the impact fee, but then you have years and years and years of revenue coming from that business. So, we're not giving anything away here. We're creating a little bit better scenario so that they'll come here and then have long-term benefits. And then the last part I want, I want to say is that both the mayor and I have had recent discussions with other communities on the fact that there are other ways to calculate impact fees, and that it might be that there's something else that can be done. So it's a broader discussion, but I definitely feel this is one that we need to let businesses know, we want to move forward on something to help make it easier to bring businesses here.
Yeah. We don't have a motion or anything, we're not, but, but what I would say to move this forward, as we have discussed, is there are lots of aspects to this, and we are going to bring these to the Economic Development Committee in the future, and just look at all angles of this. Yes, sir, Mr. Santos?
Yeah, also the Finance Committee, if Mr. O'Rourke doesn't, doesn't mind. I noticed a twitch in our administrator when you brought up the decreases in the revenue coming to the town based on our budget, our current budget. So, we have to keep that into, in mind as well. As you know, we're not building as many homes, or, or, right now, revenue is not coming in. We just, we just got the graph showing how much less we're making now into the town, and it sounds like you're ready to cut even less, which means, it sounds to me like you're trying to move more toward raising taxes, because we're going to have to get revenue somehow, and I'll defer to my Finance Chairman on that, because he's the expert, but we have to really take a look at this very closely, because when you start reducing the revenues in already very streamlined, I mean, we're trying to build, work with building an athletic facility, share the costs with, you know, a high school, and, and we can't even get those numbers to work now because of the budget. And if you start cutting even more, it's going to be, it's going to really, I think, hurt the town, and inevitably, you're going to be forced to raise taxes.
Can I just address that, because it's a react, because it was incorrect?
Can I?
Yeah. Why don't we go to others, and then we'll come back to you?
It's a complete mistake what I said.
I guess we're discussing, because I guess the agenda item said discussing, but I've done a lot of research on this topic, and, and, and some of these impact fees can be, some of these impact fees can be staggering numbers. So if you look at, like, you know, one thing I hear a lot, having young kids, is people who live in the Park West, Carolina Park sector of town, there's not activities for young children out there. You know, I take my kids to Skizzo all the time, it's in the south end of town. We go to the movie theaters, there's two of them, both in the south end of town. So, looking at just like a movie theater example, for instance, and I'll ask this rhetorically, but would anybody care to guess if you were to build a movie theater the size of Palmetto Grand in the north end of town, how much it would cost in impact fees? $2.33 million. So basically, by having these impact fees, we're essentially saying, we don't want another movie theater in town, we don't want another Skizzo and trampoline park, we, we don't want another this or that. Who can afford these impact fees? Large corporations, Lowe's, Home Depot. And so, the other thing during the election, I heard a lot from those in the north end of town, is they don't have as many local restaurants, and, and they don't have a wonderful grace and grit up there. Sorry.
Conflict of interest.
Throw that in there. You know, they don't have wonderful local restaurants up there and things like that. And, and this is why, this is a huge hindrance to that. And, and researching further, while I know our legal counsel has said that you cannot separate, you know, the residential and the commercial, well, that's actually per what, what the impact fee goes towards. So if you take just the traffic impact fee, you can't say, oh, we're going to charge 80% to, or 100% to residential and 50% to commercial. But what you can do is take something like the recreation impact fee, which is only paid by residential development, and why is that at 80? Let's put that at 100. We're having trouble getting new facilities and stuff for our recreation department anyway. So, put some of the, the, the burden on residential in, in that case, and then lower it on the, on the traffic impact side. So anyway, so I'll actually make a motion to, I'll make a motion to raise the recreation impact fee to 100%, and lower the traffic impact fee to 50%.
All right. We have a motion.
I don't know if we're ready for that, but that's what I feel. And it dies.
Well, I certainly... I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
Yeah, I, I agree. Okay. So we have a motion and, and a second, and I'm going to need you, I'm going to need someone to get the details of that motion, because I, you gave it before I was ready to write them down. I understand.
Actually, just for discussion, I should have said it in the form of a motion.
Mayor, it was a big mistake.
But the motion, the correct motion, or what I, the motion was to raise recreation impact fees to 100%.
I'll, okay.
I, I thought you wanted a clarification of the motion.
I do, go ahead, right ahead. And, and the other was?
To lower.
To lower traffic impact fees to 50%.
All right. So we have a second, and now you have the floor, Ms. Lanning.
Thank you. Okay. I just want to clarify, because I thought laying this out like this would be helpful. Thank you, Lauren, for doing that. What I'm saying here is exactly the opposite of trying to cut revenue for the town. I'm talking about increasing revenue in the long run. Impact fees happen one time upfront, and we're almost built out as a community. So our only opportunity to have more impact fees are repurposing things and whatever remaining land we have. And we, that will also eventually be filled up, pretty much. We need something that lasts in the long run, and if we end up seeing a lot of our remaining land, or things that are repurposed, turn into storage units, or, or stay in the county, or any number of things, it doesn't create any long-term revenue. So the whole point of this exercise was to show that by lowering impact fees, you actually create more activity. And creating more activity brings in more fees in the long run, it brings in more property taxes and so forth. So the break-even point is only a few years out in all of these examples except one, and beyond that, it's all pure revenue that we wouldn't have had in the town. So I just want to make sure everybody knows, I was not saying, let's take revenue away from the town, it's the opposite.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. O'Rourke.
I just hope that, I mean, I love this subject, I hope we don't government this thing up and talk about it for 10 years. I, I, but it's with the right person, and Jake's all over it too. So I'm going to vote no on the motion, but I, I really...
I withdraw my motion, if you withdraw your second.
I really want to do that, so that we can get this thing in our committee and, and get it where it needs to be, because it's important. The goals we all agree on.
And I will echo that, too. We need to look at this, we need to encourage commercial and, and not residential. Did you just say you would withdraw your motion?
Yeah, Ms. Lanning will withdraw the second, I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. So we have no motion, but we have agreed that it's going to get discussed in committee.
Economic development and finance.
And finance.
All right.
Mayor, if I, if I could just say one thing. Mr. Almaz's report, annual report with the different years, said, said it all. It said, and I think it's like 2017, we had this many businesses come in, but in 2018, when the fees went sky-high, I mean, it was like, maybe 10% of what we had the previous year.
Right.
And, and I'm, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but that report told me that this kind of thing will be, I think, be revenue neutral, at least revenue neutral, to bring in more businesses, and that's what we've got to do.
All right. Thank you. So it's going to get discussed, it's going to committee. If you'd like to comment, you can, but it's not going to...
I was just going to say one more thing, you know, you're talking about bringing in more people. Well, we heard the mayor say how he got stuck in traffic out there at 10:30 in the morning time, and you're talking about bringing in more businesses, which will bring in more people. I think that's where we got to really watch what we're going to do here, because it might have some unintended consequences by lowering that. Everybody, we know everybody wants to come to Mount Pleasant now. We have great schools, our taxes are low, there's so many good things about us, so if we do this, and we have more businesses coming, traffic, more traffic's going to come, we're going to have to widen more roads, I mean, you just got to remember, we're going to have unintended consequences with that, and I just, I'm basing that on what the mayor said on his travel up, up north at 10:30 in the morning. I mean...
Let's, let's have the debate in committee. We've agreed to send it to committee, we don't all need to speak five times on this tonight, okay? All right. So we're going to do this in committee. The next item on the agenda is, as we amended it, the humane treatment of animals. This is old business, item B1. If you want to see what it is, it comes from section two, from page two. Item E at the bottom of the page, which is final reading for the ordinance to amend the sections of our existing ordinance regarding humane treatment of animals.
I moved to approve final reading.
Second.
And then I also moved to amend the, wait, sorry.
First the motion to?
Second on that.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a second.
And I'd like to move to amend the, to amend the ordinance as in the document that I provided to the town administrator, there are specific sections, there's some, just sort of a few, a few language changes, but the, the main issue was, working with the Charleston Animal Society, they wanted the roof for the shelter to extend eight inches over the doorway, which I believe is less than what was originally in the, because that's what their, their shelters currently have. So they just wanted to make sure that they were in compliance with the ordinance. So that was the, the major change. And then in the second section, there was an addition about, of a pulley, because there's, it's not just tethering with a chain, there's also potential for like a pulley. So there was an addition to that. And, and there's, I mean, but, do I need to read out every single change? No. Okay. So this is, this is in the red line document.
Just have your motion reference that, those changes.
I'd like to reference that document, those changes in the document.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Tag it.
We have a second. Mr. Santos. All right. Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes. Now we're to passing, final reading of the ordinance. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to pass, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So the ordinance is passed. Mr. DeMore is not here, does someone need to read the legal?
Yes, sir. We'll read it, or, final reading, ordinance two zero zero seven.
Thank you very much. This brings us to section C, executive session. We have two reasons stated. The first is legal and contractual. Item A, discussion of security measures at town council meetings and committees. Item B is legal advice regarding a contractual matter involving the town's contract for legal representation. Section two, personnel, and these are personnel matters retired to department retirements. B, consideration of applications submitted to serve on the planning commission. C is consideration of applications submitted to serve on the historic preservation commission. D, consideration of applications to serve on the commercial design review board. And E, consideration of applications to serve on the accommodations tax advisory committee. Do we have a motion? We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
To enter into executive session for the reasons stated before we vote, council may take action on any item, including any subsection of any section listed on an executive session agenda, or discussed in an executive session during a properly noticed meeting. So when we reconvene, we can vote on information we received. All in favor of the motion to enter executive session for the reasons stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in executive session.
That's why I didn't say. So I may have been here. Don't be anywhere.
It's the same people as last month with two new additions.
Okay. That's it?
Yeah.
Further business before this council, we stand adjourned.
Committee meeting day. We have something before that.
I know you know how your games game is. How do they go?
They won, hold on. They won twenty-nine seventeen.
Is he totally addicted to basketball?